I'd like to call this meeting to order. It looks like we have a quorum, so I would like to invite Pastor Jerry Dunn for our prayer.
Father, we thank you for this day that you have made and for the blessings that are ours in it. We thank you for the life that we are able to live in this great nation and, Father, in this county. We thank you for the fact that we are able to live in peace and in safety. Father, we ask your blessing upon this meeting today. We ask that you be with Chairman Moss and each member of the board. Father, that you would guide and direct them in making decisions that will be for the betterment of us all. And, Father, we ask your blessing and protection today upon all those who are in our law enforcement. And, Father, we pray that you would keep them safe and from harm and bless them in every way. And we give you thanks for it. It's in Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Reverend Dunn. Supervisor Johnson, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to call for an executive session to be held November 16, 2015, at 9:30 a.m. or at the conclusion of the regular meeting, whichever is later, for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS Section 38-431.03, Subsections A, 3, and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterix.
So move. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Going on to item one. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Taylor, is there any reason to go into executive session on this item?
I'm not worried. Any questions? We can discuss this one.
Thank you very much, Attorney Taylor. Committee and legislative reports. I will start to my right with Supervisor Angus.
None this morning.
Supervisor Bishop?
I have none, thank you.
Supervisor Watson?
None this morning, sir.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Lower Colorado River Multispecies Conservation Program held their steering committee meeting. I will submit a copy of this. It came from Bill Lamb. We pay Bill Lamb through Quad State to do that. The one interesting part is, well, they have the native fish augmentation plan for '15 through 2020. That's gonna be bringing, they're gonna spend over $30 million on that. The only other thing I had was this morning, the President is signing into law, the bill that balances the budget, which will put us to $20 trillion in debt in the next year. It also brings up, I think, $57,000 for every man, woman, and child. And for those of us that pay taxes, $150-some thousand dollars we owe. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson. I thank you for your report on the native fish breeding program and the $30 million. I will make the observation that the native fish thrived in the Colorado when it was a slow-moving, shallow, swampy, marsh-like area. And now that it has been channelized by the federal government to be a fast-moving, deep and cold river, they can't survive there. And why they bother, I don't have a clue. Anyways, going on to, well, I know two, it's they lack common sense. But going on to the county administrator's report, item three of the agenda.
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, County Administrator Hendrix. Going on to item four. Approval of the September 28, 2015 Board of Supervisors' special meeting minutes. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Will we approve those minutes?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going on to call to the public. It does not appear that I have any call to the public forms filled out. Is there anyone who would like to speak before I close call to the public? The public is closed. Going on to presentations. Our first presentation is on the recent reorganization of the Arizona Department of Transportation, Engineering, and Maintenance Districts and the new Northwest District, which includes Mojave County by Alvin Stump, P.E., Arizona Department of Transportation, Prescott Division. Mr. Stump, the floor is yours.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Great to be here today. Let's see, get the presentation up. All right, there it is. Basically, gonna kinda explain the changes within ADOT, essentially moving towards optimizing our resources within the organization to meet what we have for budget. What I'm gonna show you is a presentation that was put out for staff a couple of months ago, but it kinda shows the points and has good illustrations. You know, as the overall construction program has shrank, we've had to continue to look for opportunities to become more efficient. And basically, at the start of this year, there were 10 engineering districts, two of them in the Phoenix area, three operations groups, and 13 development groups. Those were all support groups within the Valley and major projects branch. And then we, well, just one quick note. The last time ADOT has done any restructuring was in '93, so it's been quite a while. And it has, the old structure, I feel, has worked well for the districts. Then earlier this year, we started doing some changes down in Phoenix as positions were available. They started to reorganize some. And then, beginning the summer, we started looking at redoing the district boundaries for the state. Essentially, we reduced the number from 10 to 8. Over on the eastern side, the old Globe District was split in half between Holbrook and Safford area. You can see that over on your far right there. The yellow lines are the old district boundaries and the red ones are the new boundaries. And then, more closely to home here, the Kingman District and the Prescott District essentially combined into one district, except for we, we had the, we used to have the Verde Valley and the Payson area, which that became part of the, what's the North Central District. And there was a lot of discussion over renaming and, you know, sticking with the local name didn't really fit because the districts got a little larger, so we felt that doing a regional name was more fitting. People could at least have a better idea of what the area was, so that's why we became the Northwest District. The old Flagstaff was, is now North Central, et cetera. But that's really, essentially, we now have two functioning offices. For me, I'm splitting my time between the two places, but basically, the same staff that's here in the Kingman area is gonna remain intact and function as they've been And then, another part of the reorganization is creating a Transportation System Management Operations Division. A little more reorganization, but essentially organizing to look at how technology will come into play in transportation as we get, you know, cars are more interconnected with Wi-Fi and then into the future, possible connection, signal timing, variable speed. You know, all those things are, lead to the changes, so trying to adapt to that. And just, and then what you see here is just a lot of the offices down in the Valley that were part of what we call the operations have become part of this group, just so they're better coordinated together. But that's really the gist of it. Be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have. I look forward to the opportunity to work over here. I spent a little time in the Yuma District as district engineer before going back up to Prescott to be there, but, so look forward to working over here now, too.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stump. Does any member of the board have any questions? I'll start with my left, Supervisor Johnson.
No questions.
Supervisor Watson?
None.
Supervisor Bishop?
No, I just wanted to welcome you to Mojave County and meeting with you. I know that you have the concerns of our county and you're pretty knowledgeable already, so just look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thanks.
Supervisor Angus?
Same here. Look forward to working with you.
I will echo Supervisor Bishop and Angus's comments, who was a great meeting I had with you earlier. I look forward to working with you, and I'm very impressed by your credentials and the focus of your agency. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Going on, we have a status update on the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District presented by John Flynn, Administrator. Mr. Flynn? And by memory, it's also Chief Martin, is that correct?
Close.
Close.
Moore.
Moore, I apologize. Somewhere around, oh, Chief Martin's in my district, I apologize. Mr. Flynn and Chief Moore, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Chairman Moss. Supervisors, John Flynn, I'm the Administrator for the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District. With me is Chief Patrick Moore, chief from Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District who, under contract, provides operational control and management for Lake Mojave Rancho's. So just a background here this morning, approximately 32 months ago, the district was insolvent. We were upside down by about $750,000. The Board of Supervisors appointed me as Administrator with the same duties and responsibilities as a board. So over the last 32 months, we have become solvent as of, came out of the last fiscal year, as of June 30, 2015. With cash on hand, the district is now solvent. So there were two options that we had to explore. Statutorily, we're required on the Fire District community to explore mergers and consolidations when a district is having financial struggles. We did that with the Board of Supervisors' approval. We looked to consolidate Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District into the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District. That requires both entities political folks to agree. That was not the case. Northern Arizona Consolidated felt it was not in their best interest to do that at this time. Completely understandable from their part. Currently, the district runs on a $1.1 million budget. Some of that's grants, which may or may not come in. We do have a fairly significant tax liability in regards to folks not paying their taxes. So really, we expend about $850,000 a year total. Right now, we're running about $70,000 average a month to operate the district. So again, I go back to those two options. It was consolidate, which we wanted to do in this fiscal year, and/or return the district to an independent governing board. I discussed that briefly with both Supervisor Bishop and Mr. Ekstrom, and they felt that the, at least Mr. Ekstrom felt that was the next step to return the board now, since consolidation's off the table, to return the board, or return the district to a independent, five-member governing board. In the, so ARS 16226 requires that at the local level or the LMRFD level, I need to call for an election, and then that is subsequent to approval of the Board of Supervisors. On the, in regards to timing, I did that in October, hoping for March with subsequent, and then would have your approval. In speaking with the Elections Director, March is a conflict with the presidential preference election, so we'd have to go in May. And so with the board's direction, I'd go ahead and revise the call at our November public meeting in LMRFD for a May, I believe it's May 22. And that election would coincide with a special election the governor has called on education funding as well. And with that, I would answer any questions that the Chair of the Board might have.
Thank you very much.
I have some questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we will start with Supervisor Johnson, to my left.
Thank you. First of all, I don't know why this was put on the agenda as a presentation, because we can't give any direction on a presentation. Needs to be an item that should have been listed for action. But you made the statement again today that Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District is financially stable. And that's the same statement that was given to us in August, I believe. Long-term debt obligation, zero. You'd put together a plan, recovery plan, to address the financial and operational changes that satisfied the following requirements. Return the district to financial viability in approximately 24 months, plus or minus, which we're obviously way over that. Retire the outstanding debt and repay Mojave County for financial assistance provided during the two-year recovery period. Continued provision of emergency services to district residents at a level that is financially sustainable, given the financial status of the Fire District. The plan was dependent upon and sustained through temporary funding provided by the Mojave County Finance Department and the Mojave County Treasurers Office. You guys are still into us for almost a quarter of a million dollars. How can you be financially stable? And how come we're not showing on the debt line?
Chairman Moss, to that point, Supervisor Johnson, we, so the district had basically two different accounts at the Treasurers' Office. There's a non-tax account, and then there's a tax account. And so the technical aspect of that is that, in the agreement that we had, that we had between Mojave County, myself as the Administrator of the district, and Wells Fargo, that because the district, when we started off in February, we had carried a balance from the revolving line of credit from the past fiscal year into the new fiscal year, and then we had all the liabilities, the three-quarter million dollars in liabilities. Wells Fargo wanted to be paid. We still needed to operate the district. So what we did with the Treasurers' Office is, we set up a non-tax account and a tax account, so that every penny that came in for taxes would get swept to pay back Wells Fargo. And the ambulance revenues and everything else would go into the non-tax account, along with the county's funding to backstop the district, so we could still operate at a minimal level. And that was in the non-tax account. So let's go forward 32 months. So to your point, the district has been solvent since before the end of the last fiscal year. We continue to be. I continue each and every time that we make payments to somebody, so are continuing ongoing payments every two weeks, payables and then payroll, I send to the Treasurers' Office and Finance, I send a note that says, "We're going to expend X amount of money." And so typically, every two months, it's like $35,000, or every two weeks, it's $35,000, $65,000, $70,000 a month. We credit that back against registered warrants, because when we start July 1, at this new fiscal year, all of our taxes haven't come in yet, so we had a, we had a cash balance. But the county is still backstopping us as if it was a revolving line of credit that we had with Wells. In the meantime, we were, we've been accumulating cash in the non-tax account. So while there was a balance last week of 258, $54,000, I don't have it off the top of my head, so, but to your point, Supervisor Johnson, 200, about a quarter million dollars. And as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, the district has the cash on hand to offset that, and so that's what I did on Friday. And it was a miscommunication on, between the Treasurers' Office and me, that, so my thought was is, or my, my understanding was that as we registered warrants, we'd use any funds on hand to offset those warrants, but evidently, they can't do, they can do that with the taxes, but they can't do it with non-tax revenue. So I thought it was a process issue, but it wasn't a process issue, was I needed just to tell them, hey, just offset the warrants with our cash on hand. So we did that on Friday. The 200, the quarter million dollars that the district was obligated to pay to the county has been paid. So that's, and we have 100-and-some thousand dollars on hand. And now that taxes are coming in, we shouldn't have a need to be backstopped again until probably February, March, and then as the second round of taxes come in in April, then we'll be, we'll be back out on a cash basis and we'll finish the year again on a completely cash basis. So if that caused some misunderstanding, Chairman Supervisor Johnson, I apologize for that. That was my oversight with the Treasurers' Office, thinking that it was just a process issue on their, and it was a process, it was my process issue. Process issue, I should have just directed them to move that cash against our outstanding balance.
Well, it did cause a problem with me. I don't know about the other board members, but when we're told that they're financially stable and they have zero debt, and we're carrying a quarter of a million, and that's, if you've paid off the debt, I have no reason to believe you haven't. But now you're saying in February, we've gotta bail you out again. Not financially stable. I mean, that's, Mojave County's not here to bankroll all these fire districts. I mean, the taxpayers don't pay us to bankroll these fire districts. I mean, how financially stable can that district be if they have to continue to come back to us?
Chairman Moss, Supervisor Johnson, to that point, most special taxing districts experience this same issue. That's why we have revolving lines of credit with the county servicing bank, Wells Fargo. At the, with the, with Lake Mojave Rancho's, because they were financially insolvent, there was a, we put a plan into place that the county would backstop LMRFD so that we could provide at least a minimal level of services to all the citizens out there. We'll change that over to a revolving line of credit with Wells. So when I say insolvent, I mean just collectively, year over year, revenues are not meeting expenditures, and so revenues do meet expenditures in this case. We just have to depend upon a credit line of some sort. Either the county Treasurers' Office provides that line of credit by backstopping the district, or Wells Fargo, through the county servicing bank, would provide that. But we'll clear the end of the year in a cash basis.
Right.
Positive cash basis.
And I think where, at least my confusion came from, I thought, and like you said, you paid it off Friday finally, but in August, when we were told that we were, we were solvent, the books were even, and obviously, we weren't. And if the books were even then, we should not still be, I don't think this board, and that'll be, obviously, the attorney will give me a different opinion, but I think it needs to come back to the board to continue the funding. We bailed it out here, and they're, they're doing fine now, or, you know, you say they're solvent now. We shouldn't be looking to bail them out in February again. It takes, should take another board action. That's the only thing before somebody spending their money. Thank you, Mr. Flynn. That's the only questions I have.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Watson, do you have any questions?
I just want a little more clarification. In February, you go back to the counties functioning with Wells Fargo on their credit. Is that correct?
In February 2013.
And that's, that's the normal procedure for, that's the normal procedure for most special districts?
For most special districts that do not have a significant cash balance to carry them through the non-tax periods, yes, they draw on a revolving line of credit.
We wouldn't be looking at an atypical situation, then? It would be a normal situation, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Supervisor Watson, he's, he's got 13 and 15. 15, he's still coming back to us. Or 16.
16.
He'll be coming back to us.
So in 16, do you propose in coming back to Mojave County to request funds for operation?
So Chairman Moss, Supervisor Watson, to that point, one of, one of two things will have to happen with Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District. Either we will have to secure a revolving line of credit through Wells Fargo, so that we operate as other special taxing districts do during times when we don't have property tax revenues in a quantity to cover our ongoing expenses at that point in time, or the Mojave County will need to backstop the district. And so in that regard, the, and so when I, in my discussions with the Treasurers' Office, with Mr. Barker there, it was beneficial for both the district, because I don't believe when we were insolvent, we were gonna get backstopped by Wells Fargo, because we had owed them so much money, that probably wasn't gonna happen. They want us to be basically operating in a cash-positive position at the end of every year, or, so for the county actually made more money on the interest that they got from us paying them for the backstop than they would from their investments. And so that's why that was, that was done. So it helped both, it helped out both the county and Lake Mojave Rancho's.
But moving forward, our goal is to move it back over onto the Wells Fargo line of credit.
I understand where you're trying to go. My question is, how long is it gonna take to make sure that you're there?
We'll begin conversations now that we're not going to consolidate the district into NAC. We will start conversations with Wells Fargo. We have, we're, have a cash position now. We won't, we don't anticipate that we would be in a, in a non-cash position temporarily until probably February. So we'd start those discussions right away.
I share the same concern that Supervisor Johnson does. We just wanna make sure that your district is, is healthy before we let it loose to an elected board with that responsibility.
Chairman Moss, Supervisor Watson, so do I. Absolutely.
Thank you, Supervisor Watson. Supervisor Bishop, do you have anything?
I have a question on the revolving line of credit. Is there a chance that this may not get approved or accepted by Wells Fargo when you go to them and ask for this revolving line of credit because of the past financial difficulties?
Chairman Moss, Supervisor Bishop, yes, that's always a possibility. So it, yes.
And then, how does that happen? If Wells Fargo says no, and Mojave County also says no, what happens to the district at that point?
Well, then we would, then I would need to dial back, basically, expenditures and staffing and everything else, so that we could get through the point where we don't have tax funds, up until the point that we do have tax funds, which would be probably April, May, to close out the year.
Okay. My other concerns were already asked and answered by the other two supervisors, and I do appreciate the, the tax interest that we have received from the district, and, but I'm willing to give that up for them to be fiscally solvent and on their own. So thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. Supervisor Angus, do you have anything? Thank you, Chief Moore and Mr. Flynn. I think you have done an outstanding job getting this district mostly back on their feet. We're almost there, and I look forward to hearing another report from you folks down the line, and hopefully, we'll have that Wells Fargo line of credit. If not, we'll deal with it then.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Supervisors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Moss?
Yes.
Do we need to agendize that for the next meeting, so that we can take action on the election?
We could do that. I would put that over to County Administrator Hendrix, if you can speak with Mr. Flynn, and investigate the need to have this agendized regarding the board elections, potentially sometime in May.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Also on that, can the attorneys look into the, depending upon what the board wants to do, maybe this district doesn't wanna stay Fire District. Maybe you can also have an election to see if they wanna stay a Fire District. Maybe you can also have an election to see if they want to stay a fire district.
I think both alternatives would probably be on the table. So, yes, you can look into that and getting it properly agendized enough in advance that we can take effective action before May of next year. All right. Next, we have a presentation of a package on compensation comparisons by Jim McCabe, our Mojave County Sheriff. Sheriff McCabe?
Good morning.
And this is the first time I've actually seen the sheriff have his assistants sit down. You should be up here working Assistant Sheriff.
He certainly helped me as well as all my staff putting this package together. Mr. Chairman, Admiral Board and Staff, I sent to you last week a compensation study that our staff put together over the last couple of months, and I don't really plan on doing a presentation at this point. I know that you've got it all and you've seen it. What I would like to do is to read into the public record the cover letter that was accompanied by that package.
That's fine with me. There may be board members who have questions though after you read the cover letter.
I'm sure.
Go ahead.
I prepared a package of information pertaining to the staffing levels of certified law enforcement personnel as it pertains to the sheriff's office. I would ask you to review the information provided. Upon doing so, you will see that the sheriff's office is far behind any professional scale as it pertains to law enforcement wages and staffing. As a comparison basis, I've utilized the three major cities within Mojave County as well as Yuma and Yavapai Counties. I feel this is an accurate comparison. We are behind in all of the comparisons in all categories, which include deputies, sergeants, lieutenants, and captains. Other areas we lack is in the amount of deputies per citizens' ratio. The square miles covered per deputy far exceeds any other area used for comparison. Our greatest shortfall comes with seniority. With the county unable to give cost of living raises or merit increases over the past eight years, we have fallen dreadfully behind any competitive comparison level. In the past 10 years, we have observed a 117% turnover rate in deputy sheriffs. Obviously, this is not only unacceptable, but it is costly to continue to train personnel just to see them depart to go to another aging seat that we cannot compete with. Over the years, the sheriff's office has worked diligently with the county with continued deteriorating resources. However, I believe at this juncture, we can no longer continue in the same vein in hopes that something will change to improve our resources. Knowing that, and knowing we cannot provide the citizens the level of service that they deserve necessitates, an action must be taken. After discussing this with my staff and listening to county staff, including our county administrator and our finance director, I believe the only reasonable option is institute a quarter cent sales tax. I do not ask for this action lightly. I do however believe it is the most practical way to address the situation we currently find ourselves in. Of course, I'm not asking for any action to be taken on this date. What I'm hoping that we can start looking at this process and the possibility of it so that it would be in place for next year's budget year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheriff McCabe. I know that I and the other supervisors have read your packet, and with that, if there's any questions, I'll start with Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, I was going through the presentation, and you broke it down, deputy sheriff, police officers, and you used, just for people out there will know, used Lake Havasu City, Bullhead City, Kingman, Yavapai, Yuma, and Mojave County. And Mojave does come in considerably. Did you do it apples to apples, like first year, you know, because the discrepancies are pretty big when you get to lieutenant and captain? So, is, did you use, like, how did you use, because by the time they reached that, they've put in a certain amount of years?
Correct. We use a median on it. That's, you know, like when you asked me what was the starting wage of the deputy sheriff, we didn't have that in there because we use a median of all those categories. The problem that we're running into, not necessarily the entrance wages of each one of those categories, but the fact that in the last eight years, there wasn't a 2.5% or 3% merit increase or cost of living increase. So, all those categories got compressed. So, I have people that have been with the department for a half a dozen years that are making the same amount of money that the guy gets out of the academy, and that's the issue. So, that's why they're leaving. And we currently have, I have 13 open certified positions, and I have 11 officers in various training states, which may be in the academy or on FTO. So, I'm basically running 24 deputies down out of a total of 90. So, it's, and that is our, at our current staffing level, and I believe our current staffing level would be somewhere between 30 to 32 deputies short of what it should be.
Okay. And I just also on the record, and yes, compensation is a big part of why people leave, but it's not the only reason.
Not at all. We also have right now, and it's odd how there's ebbs and tides, and right now, we have a lot of retirement going on. And last week, I had a sergeant retire, and this week, we've got a lieutenant retiring. Two months ago, I had a lieutenant retiring. So, it's not all that, no. And I'm not saying that it is, but the bottom line is, we've got to do something to attract the people when they retire, and we're kind of falling short on that part.
Okay, that's all I have.
Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you Sheriff McCabe. It's a very nice presentation that you did, but I want to point out that all county employees are suffering from the fact that Mojave County does not pay fairly, and I think it's a problem that needs to be addressed countywide, as well as with your department and the jail. I would like to see a quarter cent sales tax raised as well, but I would like to see all of our employees be compensated for their time and service and the job that they're performing based on comparisons from other counties of like size. So, although I agree with your presentation, and I hope we can get a quarter cent sales tax, I'd like to include a compensation study for all employees, and that way, we can work on the PTO issues, we can work on the salaries, and we can keep this county exceptional, as Supervisor Watson points out often. And my other point is morale issues. I understand that besides salary, there's a lot of morale issues, and a part of that is our fault because we've drugged on the PTO issues for so long, but I know a lot of it is existing with your department. So, I would hope that you would also, besides increasing the salary, if we can do this, to increase the morale for your employees.
I think that would do a lot of it.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Bishop. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you Sheriff McCabe. You did an excellent job in putting your report together.
Thank you.
Points out a number of inefficiencies that are entertained not only in your department but throughout the county. And the reason I keep probably putting emphasis on your department is one that is such a vital item for Mojave County to present to our constituents, and being 70% functional in your department is rather alarming. It was alarming to me a number of months ago, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure that we addressed it as soon as we could.
Thank you.
And well job, job well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and needless to say, the credit goes to my staff.
Thank you very much Supervisor Watson. Supervisor Johnson?
I do have a couple of questions, Sheriff McCabe. I'll start out with saying that I think you and your staff have done an outstanding job putting together this report. There are a couple of things I would like to comment on it. Sometime between now and our serious budget meetings for next cycle, because thank you for offering to let us wait until the next budget cycle. I'd like to see the comparison with all 15 counties plus our three cities to give, rather than having, so it's in the record, here's all of Arizona as opposed to two or three or four counties that we've just grabbed off. And I do agree with you choosing those particular counties because they are the closest to us in size, but so the public has a bigger picture. Secondly, I do have a concern regarding the funding source. It does require a unanimous vote if we're going to do the sales tax, and I think that becomes even more complicated when we start talking about all employees as opposed to employees in law enforcement. But still, I'd like to continue pursuing this line of inquiry. I think it's a noble objective, and I think it's something that we need to look at. But another concern I had in the thing is that you recommended pre-programmed increases so we didn't have this problem again in the future. And considering how volatile government budgets are, we have our periods of bust and boom, I'm not certain pre-programmed increases are going to happen.
Yeah, I can understand. Yeah, it's just something to think about that I think would be advantageous, and even if you do start it, there's nothing saying that somewhere down the road, well, we just can't continue this, it didn't work out or whatever.
Well, I'm trying to let you down easy on one or two of these issues. When it comes to, the last issue is, we also have this issue regarding PTO, which is coming up later in the meeting, and which I think Supervisor Bishop referenced, because PTO has been used as a kind of offset to finances. And I'm not asking you to do this because I think it would be too heavy of a task, but somehow monetizing our PTO versus our competitors so we can figure out what the difference is financially so we can plug that in and get a more complete look at the financial compensations that we offer compared to other counties. But those are just thoughts I have. I want to compliment you on a, I believe it's online, and I recommend any citizen to read it. It's very well-written, very easy to understand, very stark in his descriptions.
It is very stark. I did that purposely. We actually did this several different times, had it rewritten, because I wanted it to be just, bottom line, this is what it is. At 9:30 this morning, this has gone out to all media personnel, so they'll be able to report on it, they'll be able to study it and print it if they wish. So, trying to make it very assist the public in becoming aware of it, and that was my main purpose today with reading this into the record.
And I think it was a great assistance to me putting some of these issues in black and whites. We just need to tweak it a little more going into the next budget cycle, which means Rodney Head, who gets to take a break right now, will be working a little harder, I'm sure.
I'm sure he will.
Thank you very much Sheriff McCabe. I do appreciate it.
Thank you Board and Staff. Especially thanks for the water.
Going on to the consented agenda, the following items under consent agenda, items 5 through 29, will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and for separate discussion and action. I'll start with Supervisor Johnson to my left. Supervisor Watson?
None.
Supervisor Bishop?
I have none.
Supervisor Angus?
None.
I would like to pull nine. Having said that, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda accepting items nine, 24, and 26?
So, move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Going on to item nine, I pulled it because of a potential conflict, and so I'm not going to vote on this particular item.
Item number nine, sitting as the Board of Directors for the Mojave County Flood Control District, approve the assignment of job order to McCormick Construction Company under Job Order Contract 13-PS-08 to perform channel maintenance work on the Mojave County Flood Control District Laughlin Airport Flood Protection Project, Reach 202 for a not-to-exceed fee of $184,778, and authorize the Director of Development Services to issue the notice to proceed. The work will be paid from existing maintenance funds budgeted for the Mojave County Flood Control District Channel Maintenance Program. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. Vice Chairman Bishop?
You're welcome. Motion passes.
Going on to item 24, approve an intergovernmental agreement between Desert Hills Fire District and Mojave County for a period of three years or until all overpayments reimbursed by the county, whichever is sooner. The IJGA will be terminated upon Mojave County notifying the fire district that all amounts owed to the county have been recovered. This was placed on the agenda by the Special Deputy County Attorney. I'm County Attorney Taylor. Is there anything you would like to say on this item?
Thank you Chairman Moss. Some concerns were brought to the county attorney's office late Friday, and it would be our request that this be removed from the agenda perhaps. We can discuss and restructure it and bring it back in a future agenda. From what I understand, this was, item 24 was put together in settlement of potential claims, at which there was some exposure from the county. The district funds were to be dispersed back to the county over a period of time, but from what I understand, how the transaction actually occurred, the, all the district funds, there were sufficient district funds available to take care of the liability, and that was all dispersed in one transaction. So, in order to proceed with something like this now, it would have to be in the nature of a loan, and it's not structured right for a loan.
So, to understand what's occurred, the IGA would have allowed the district to pay back the county in three equal installments as opposed to one lump sum.
That's correct.
But in between the IGA being put together and this board meeting occurred, the treasurer took the entirety of what was owed, and so there's no reason for the IGA anymore.
That's correct.
Okay. I will start with Supervisor Johnson. Do you have anything to say on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many years does this represent? Do you know, Mr. Taylor? Years of taxes that we've collected that?
I'm not sure. I think three years.
Okay. I guess some of the questions, you've answered part of it because I figured this was a loan because I knew it had already been paid off with the money they had. Whose fault is it that this money was collected and paid to the fire district? The assessor cannot do anything as far as taking it off the fire district out until the city files a proper paperwork. Was the paperwork filed with the county, and then somebody at the county level ignored it? How do we get to three years of taxes?
I'm not sure how, where, you know, I just found it.
Mr. Nicholson, our county assessor, do you have any answers on that?
The floor is yours, Assessor Nicholson.
Good question Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Moss, Board, thank you for inviting me up. Actually, the way you just stated it, that the city needed to do certain things in order for this to occur, and they didn't do them, that was our interpretation, that was my staff's interpretation. That's the way things had been done in the past. This was done three, four years ago. Bottom line is that we had a latest opinion which said, no, they don't have to do anything. So, we operated on the premise that you just stated, okay? And a recent county attorney's opinion was that this does not have, the city does not have to do, I'm sorry, the city does not have to do anything other than annex, and as I understand it, the fire district has no say in saying no. And so, bottom line is, my office, operating on that same premise, assigned tax codes, we continued to send, we continued to tax the parties involved that were annexed into the city, and they paid their tax, and they should not have paid that tax. So, bottom line is, it's my watch. I assume full responsibility.
I guess the question would come, and maybe we could ask for a written opinion because what you're bringing up is kind of frightening to me, the fact that before the city would do an annexation or a fire district would do an annexation, then they should, at least in my opinion, should send you a certified copy of the election saying, this is now in our fire district, or this is now in our city, and please do what you have to do. Now, you just have to read the paper, and somebody in your office goes, okay, I'm not taxing these people?
I believe that is correct, and I agree with your thoughts. Let's face it, you know, fire districts are generally formed with 51% of the owners, 51% of the value. I cannot just, or anybody cannot just stand up and say, gee, no, I don't want to pay that tax, therefore, I do not want to be a part of the fire district, and take me off the rolls. No, you're locked in. And I think the same kind of assumption came down with this with the city. I feel sorry for Desert Hills. Desert Hills has some valuable contributors to their revenue sources, and they've watched them just evaporate and go away because basically the city annexed. And what are the advantages? If you sit there and think about the advantages to the city, they're sitting there and they're getting a sales tax, they're getting a contribution of their 72 cents per $100 assessed value for the property tax. They're the only city in the county that has a property tax. The advantage to the owner who accepts being annexed to the city is that he no longer has the burden of a $3.25 per $100 assessed value tax that he has to be liable for and pay. And, you know, it seems to me that there should be something in And, you know, it seems to me that there should be something in place, where there should be notices, and we should have something more than just like an annexation. It seems sometimes it come out of the blue.
Right. Is that something that we just had a local or County Attorney opinion, or is that like a statewide?
That was a local County Attorney's opinion, looking at the statutes. Now, we'd interpret the statutes differently earlier, okay? But the County Attorney's opinion recent was, said no. I would like to address one more thing, which I think, obviously, I read the newspapers. And I was reading an article about you and on this issue in Havasu, and what you stated was very true, because you're concerned about us being the bank in so many of these cases. And I'm listening to it even this morning. I'm sitting, I'm listening to Lake Mojave Ranchos, I know about Mineral Park, where we sat there and we fought for the benefit of the, of all these districts. You know, we do these battles, and that benefit of the government entities involved, and we take on that responsibility. But we're perceived to be the bad guys, because what happens? You approve all the tax rates, which you have no control over, other than your own, but you approve all of them, and the perception is that in third week in August, you are the ones that are determining these taxes. You have the County Treasurer who mails out the tax bills, calculates the tax, you have the assessor, which is me, who basically vies the property, and the assumption is that all these, that you're at fault with regard to all this. But you know, in providing this bank, and this money, and performing all these services, maybe we just, something we have to do, because, let's face it, we're the big kid on the block, we have the deepest pockets, and maybe these kind of decisions hold the fabric of government together in Mojave County. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop, I have no other questions. And, Mr. Chairman, that's something I would like to see if we can, when we bring this back, get a, an opinion, because it should be a statewide issue. I imagine, we have a lot, they always have to go through an election process, but I can imagine in Maricopa County, with all their different school districts, fire districts, everything they have there, the idea that they have to catch it instead of the responsibility falling upon the city or the Fire District, or those guys, notify them.
I share your concern, Supervisor Johnson. Let's go around the board once, and then we'll give some instruction to staff. Supervisor Watson, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Supervisor Bishop.
No, I don't.
Supervisor Angus.
Just in the annexation process, are there any sort of parameters they have to? I mean, do they have to prove something, or can they just pretty much say, we want to be part of Havasu instead of here? I mean, what is the?
I do not handle any of that, other than the fact that we get a notice that there's been an annexation. I assume that's a city council function that they probably vote on and approve. Buster, do you know?
It's been changed. It used to be they could run a little ribbon out and then take a good piece of land from the county. Now, there's supposed to be a square, as wide as they are long. Basically, what it breaks down to, at least in Lake Havasu areas, they bribe them into coming in by giving them money for, you know, off on their sewers, money off on improvements, that sort of thing. So, they, that's how they get them in, but they want the sales tax, and we brought in, you know, car dealerships that have all been annexed in, which bring a big, big pot of revenue to the city.
Yeah, so, it's like, they're in competition with the, the little districts are in competition with the big cities, pretty much.
Yes. Desert Hills has lost a tremendous amount of revenue.
Yes. Supervisor Bishop, do you have anything?
I do not.
I'd like to say thank you very much to Assessor Nicholson, you've done a great job explaining the situation. I don't lay the fault, if it will, at your door. It's been, it's one of those things where there is no fault, there's a flawed system that's in place, and this just sort of happened. I would suggest that perhaps we contact, when I say we, I mean, actually, I mean you, that you contact Lake Havasu and ask for any other properties they may have annexed over the last three or four years.
Five.
Five years.
No, no, no. Five properties.
Five properties. So, you've already checked with them?
We have it on our records.
Great. Excellent. And make sure that this situation doesn't repeat itself. At the meantime, we'll have to figure out a way of dealing with it. I would like to give two instructions to staff. The first is to put this on the agenda, so we can discuss the notice that's given to the county regarding the completed annexation process, because announcing it's going to occur does not necessarily mean it's been completed. So, and what, so we don't have this problem go again in the future, and what's actions the county might need to help the assessor that it doesn't happen again in the future. And secondly, this does not need to be agendized immediately, but confer with Desert Hills, because since I see their chief's signature appears on the IGA, I'm assuming that they're going to be massively surprised to know that we just took the money, when they thought they were going to pay 13,000 and some change a year, and we just took the $40,000 out of their account. They might not be aware about that, and we might want to inquire of them how that's going to impact their operations, and what we can do about that. Because I know they're a very small Fire District, and they're under a lot of pressure financially. So, that's the two instructions I would give, seeing none. Can I have a motion that we essentially, do we need a motion to just vacate twenty-four? Would you just let it die and move on?
I don't think you would need a motion, Chairman.
Just let it die and move on then. Going on to item twenty-six, absent objection, I'm going to take no action on twenty-four. Going on to item twenty-six, approve the salary adjustment increase of $12,000 annually from $57,500 to $69,500 for the Chief Deputy Treasurer position currently held by Bill Barker. Is Cindy Cox available? This is under her name? Cindy Cox, our Mojave County Treasurer, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Chairman Moss, and Supervisors and Staff. Do you have any questions about what I had written? Have you read the memos that I sent? Should I reread them?
I'll turn it over to Supervisor Johnson, as he's the one who pulled this item.
Thank you. The question I had, I don't know if it's for you or for our Finance Director, I'm not disputing that this gentleman, you know, is, needs the pay increase, it's where the money's coming from. The money for this is coming from, I guess Ms. Lloyd would be able to do it, from Finance.
Yeah, I can go ahead and quarrel if you want, or I can. The $102,000 that was turned back to the county and went into, I believe, the contingency fund from OMB, I'm asking that that comes out of the salary that was originally the Supervisor's manager's salary of OMB.
Okay. And that's, like I said, it has nothing to do with your employee or anything. My problem is, this is money that the Board put back in, that should have gone in the general fund, if the Treasurer's Office can absorb the money with what they had, I have no problem. Obviously, it might be a minority opinion, but I believe the money should come back, because now you're looking at next year, you're going to have to increase the salary to do this, to increase the budget. That was all I had, that's the reason I brought it up.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson. Do you have any questions or comments? Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I do. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
One of the questions I have is, I believe that you had requested a number of additional full-time positions prior to coming to us with Mr. Barker's request. Wasn't there three or four positions that you wanted fully funded this year?
No, we funded half of the position, because we lost a person that had been with us for 30 some odd years, who was a half-time employee at 20 hours a week, not more than 32, and her salary covered the full-time employee. That was the only change that we made, and then I did a reorganization of the office itself, but the number of employees stayed the same.
One other question I have is, one of them comment to say that, I understand that your entire Treasurer's Department is running quite well, within one week of the checks coming in and then being deposited, probably first time in a number of years that that has occurred?
I am very proud of my staff, they are amazing.
And what, what plans have you made to make sure that that continues to happen?
We continue to make efficiencies in the office and try to utilize all the technology that we have, and exploit all the technology that we have, because their, our technology can do a lot more than it's doing, and I continue to work with the Tyler Technologies to make sure that we get everything out of it that we paid for.
Technology's fine and great, but it requires people with knowledge.
Yes.
Are you making provisions for that?
I absolutely am. We, as people leave the county for one reason or another, and we've had many huge turnover in my office, some of it anticipated, because when I came in, there were a lot of people that were retiring, and the goal was to hire at a higher level, because there is a requirement now that people have a higher level of competency. You know, it's kind of like now the high school level diploma is similar to having a bachelor's degree. So, I'm looking for people that have that higher ability, thought process, working ethic, those kinds of things, that can work in a higher level. Yes.
Great. Well, now that you're within a week of performing your duties and getting those checks deposited, I'll expect that to happen every year now.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Watson. Supervisor Bishop?
I just wanted to point out that Mr. Barker was hired at a reduced salary for what his qualifications are with his bachelor's degree, and I think he's a CPA, and has quite an extensive experience in auditing and management and accounting departments. So, I think Mojave County's very lucky to have him, and I think we're lucky that the OMB Department was transferred to your department, which allowed money to be saved by not rehiring a director, and Mr. Barker is taking the responsibility of those added employees. So, I just wanted to point that out, and thank you, and thank Mr. Barker.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Bishop.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Can I add to that as well? One of the things that happened, when I first came on in 2013, I decided I was going to choose my battles very, very carefully. And I tend to do that in my life, and I wanted to do that even more carefully in this job. And I didn't come to the Board and say, my chief deputy is making $15,000 less than I made when I was the chief deputy, and the reason for that was that I was told by the Director of Finance at the time, this person is not going to make one penny more, whoever you hire, than the person that was the incumbent. And the incumbent did not have the qualifications that I required, or that the job description required. So, I did not fight for it at that time. I had a competent employee that was willing to take the position at the pay, but now we've added so many duties and technology and things that he has to do, in addition to the OMB function. It just becomes, at this point, very necessary for me to address it.
Yeah, and in addition, I think Sheriff McCabe pointed out, as well as others, that Mojave County really does need to do a wage compensation study, because it's not just Mr. Barker, there are other people that are way underpaid for their positions, and there may be a very minor amount of people that might be overpaid for what they're doing. So, I would really hope that someday Mojave County can do that, and sooner than later.
Thank you, I agree.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. Supervisor Angus?
Thank you, and, you know, I also want to say, because it's a little complicated, there was a big sort of misunderstanding that went on for several years, and it was brought to light when we did move OMB into your office, and I assume that's been working out pretty well, because I think that's where, that's where that office belonged. And so, all that money that was from OMB, did that all go into your office, or?
All but the salaries, because we had to maintain the, all of the things that they have. We hope to have some efficiencies, and I hope to come in under budget in the OMB area, but I don't want to take the chance, the risk of having that not happen, and come to you later on.
Right. Well, thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to say thank you, Treasurer Cox. I believe Mr. Barker is a, should be a treasured employee in the Treasurer's Office. He's a, he's a fine man and a fine deputy. Can I have a motion on item twenty-six?
Chairman?
Yes.
That brought up something, the salary, you brought up the salary of the OMB Director did not go in there, but yet you're saying the salary of the OMB Director is what's going to pay for your deputies' increase. Ms. Lloyd, when we, the Board, decided to give that money, I thought all funds except the salaries of the two employees and whatever computer money they needed, or whatever was transferred, did you just give all the money up, ignore us?
No, sir. We moved $102,772 that was associated with the Director's position back into contingency. And the remaining amount totaled $167,446, $167,000, went into the Treasurer's Office. So, I think essentially what Cindy, Treasurer Cox is advising is that while there may be a savings within the $167,000, that she actually is requesting that you remove $12,000 from contingency, of the 102 associated with the Director position, back from contingency, and move it over to the Treasurer's Office as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
What about the payments to Public Works where they were housed? Is those lease payments, are those still in there?
So, the, that, I believe, was about $7,210. I believe that is available for use.
Say that again?
So?
That the, essentially, the monies that were affiliated with the two other positions included $144,000 of compensation, and then right at $7,000 for supplies, and some training and travel expenses, and that included Mr. Hepler's supplies. Then, there were also some data processing, telephone charges, and things like that, that we will leave in place. But there was a building lease for this.
That was for the entire year, and we did pay July, August, September.
Three months of that was expended.
Yes.
So, it does leave the balance then, so not a full $7,000, but the difference.
I guess those are the only questions I had, Mr. Chairman, but my, it's still, my problem is, I have, because like Supervisor Bishop mentioned, the Sheriff was up here, I see other elected officials sitting in the audience who have chief deputies who need more money, and while I'm in agreement that they deserve more money, and that this position should be paid more money, that if we do not hold departments accountable and make them take it out of the budgets that they have now, and start addressing these issues piecemeal in between now and the budget time, we're just asking for problems.
I understand your concern, Supervisor Johnson, it's very rational. My observation to that would be, I view this requested pay increase as essentially compensating Mr. Barker because of his additional oversight on what is now OMB. So, we're kind of getting a mini OMB Director for $10,000 or $12,000 more, as opposed to the $102,000 that we would hire separate. So, we basically impose more duties on him, so we're giving him a little bit more money. I hope that makes sense in rebuttal.
The only, my difference would be that I thought, and I'm still really confused on exactly what OMB does now, but I thought they reported to us, and I didn't think Mr. Barker or anybody else would have any control over him, or Ms. Cox. Well, Ms. Cox has, she was put in charge of him, I guess, but I thought they still reported to the Board.
I believe OMB does report to the Board still. No, they do not?
No, we, I believe what we did was we put the two ladies from OMB into the Treasurer's Office, but we held that we could use for special projects, the Board could still.
Oh, we reserve their services.
We reserve this for special projects, but, but they report to the Treasurer, not to, not to the Board.
And our services have priorities.
That's, that's not my understanding. My understanding is that they are housed at the Treasurer's Office, but they still work for the Board, and the Treasurer can request from time to time special projects. That was my understanding.
The other way around.
I thought it was the other way around also, but let's do this. Do we want to vote on Mr. Barker now, or do we want to continue it so we can have the county administration further explain in black and white what OMB is doing, so no one's in disagreement on Mr. Barker's role, OMB's role, the Treasurer's role, and bring it back to the next meeting?
Well, I think Mr. Barker's thing could be voted on without it, but I still think maybe we should bring OMB back, because.
Yes. Get that.
Obviously, I'm the only one that understands it.
I just modified that motion, because it wasn't too long ago. I'm pretty positive that's.
Can I read it for you? I have it. It says, move the two remaining employees from OMB to the Treasurer's Office at their current salary, directly reporting to the Treasurer, with special consideration given to the Board of Supervisor Projects. That was the motion that was approved.
More or less, yep.
Okay. Just one comment.
Absolutely, Supervisor Watson.
And I'm sure that that is correct, but we need then now to address our overall staffing structure and our structure as Mojave County, because we've changed it from our original chart, our staffing chart. So, we need to take a good look at that. We have moved that from underneath the Board now to Treasurer Cindy Cox.
We have moved that from underneath the board now to Treasurer Cindy Cox. So that may require another, another motion, another move.
What I'll suggest then, because I, my view is that OMB basically now has two masters, has the Treasurer and has the board when we choose to give them an assignment. But how about we move, make a motion on Mr. Barker's salary increase, and that we instruct the county administration, once they get around to it, to bring back the issue of the reporting of OMB and the various county agencies, the structure that you mentioned, add it back to us at a later date. So it's updated within the books and whatnot and appears correctly.
I just wanted to make sure.
I understand, exactly. Can I have a motion to approve the salary adjustment increase of $12,000 annually from $57,500 to $69,500 for the Chief Deputy Treasurer position currently held by Bill Barker?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I think I've heard two yeses and one nay.
Um, yes.
Okay, so there's four yeses and one nay. Okay, all right. Moving on to.
I'm sorry, could I get a clarification? That was from contingency funds, not within the current budget, correct?
Well, we voted on it and we didn't clarify whether it was contingency or not. I believe it's coming from wherever the prior Director's salary is located.
I think, Mr. Chairman, what Ms. Lloyd's bringing up is we moved that at contingency, so now we're taking contingency funds out, so it has to be made part of the motion, probably need to reconsider.
Let's, rather than reconsider the motion, let's have a new motion directing the source of funds. We have a motion directing that the $12,000 salary increase for Mr. Barker be paid for out of the contingency.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
So it's four to one in favor of taking it out of contingency.
Thank you very much.
Going on to the public hearings. Item 30, "I'm opening the public hearing for discussion of possible action, Ray, adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-168, zoning use permit on assessor's parcel number 354-34-037E to allow a commercial kennel in AR/18A agricultural residential 18-acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity, Taos Drive between Arroyo Drive and Roundup Avenue, Mojave County, Arizona. The commission recommended approval by unanimous vote." I do have people signed up to speak on item 30. Is there a Mr. E. Dan Bender in the room? Sir, if you'll approach, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to make comments to the board.
My name is Earl Dan Bender Jr. I live at 5547 Taos. I am the person asking for the kennel use permit. Our kennel, our kennel is not actually commercial. We do not deal with the public. We just raise, we show and raise miniature Australian Shepherds. We moved out there to have more land where we can let the dogs run, because they're a herding dog and they like to run. You keep them caged up, you know, they tend to bark too much and stuff, and so we asked for the kennel use permit. We went through all the steps. I worked for Unisource Electric. I understand the county's concerns about kennels and stuff in Mojave County, because I've seen a lot of those bad kennels that you've seen, dogs chained up and all that. We bought this property, 22 acres, it's 21.9 acres. That way we can let the dogs run periodically, but not run all the time, because then they tend to run down the fence and, you know, at the neighbors or whatever. They do bark. Right now, we just, we have probably, on the sound of our breeding females and stuff, we have probably 50% of them are D-barked. We just had eight D-barked last, yesterday. We've been already inspected by AKC for our kennel. We've had flying colors there. We also are working on our USDA inspection, because we do sell pups, place pups out of country, and we had some in Canada, Germany, so forth. As of right now, I don't, I hope everything gets approved. We have a nice clean facility, nice house out there. Our dogs are our kids. We have no kids, so that's our joy, is to see our dogs run and play and have fun, and we have fun with them. I mean, I go out there with the quad, ride around the 22 acres with them.
Thank you very much, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bender? Seeing none, that's it? Thank you very much. I have no other people signed up to speak on item 30 of the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, I am closing the public hearing. May I have a motion on item 30?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2015-168 for the zoning use permit for Mr. Bender's property, and commend Mr. Bender on such a wonderful piece of property and the way he's treating his dogs. Thank you.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Congratulations, Mr. Bender. Going on to item 31. "I am now opening the public hearing for discussion of possible action, Ray, adoption of Mojave County Ordinance Number 2015-07, containing amendments to the Mojave County zoning ordinance pursuant to Arizona state statutes. The commission recommended approving the ordinance after adding industrial performance standards by unanimous vote at the September 9, 2015 PZC meeting." The first person I'm going to allow to speak on this issue is Mr. Nicholas Hunt. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say a few words. The, I'm sorry. The review of the Mojave County zoning ordinance began in 2013 by the Planning Zoning Commission. The Arizona revised statutes provide that the Planning Zoning Commission shall formulate and draft the zoning ordinance and send the recommended ordinance to the Board of Supervisors for consideration and adoption. To lead the effort, the Planning Zoning Commission appointed a review committee from among these members, and the committee began well-advertised public meetings in July of 2013 and continued until early 2015. The purpose of amending the zoning ordinance was to bring the aged document current with the realities of modern land use trends, as well as reduce regulatory requirements and restrictions on citizens, developers, and businesses. All efforts were made to make it more user-friendly, enable our staff to improve our service level to citizens, and to bring it up to date and more pertinent to present-day situations. I believe this draft accomplishes those objectives. Just want to give a few examples that proposed revisions include, it includes the reduction of development setback requirements, increasing lot coverage for residential lots, providing simplified and streamlined procedures for land use permits, allowing cottage industries, modernization of the assigned regulations, and removal of many unnecessary and unenforceable requirements. The review and revision of the ordinance was performed in accordance with the citizen participation plan adopted by the board on August 5, 2013. All of the review committee meetings were advertised on county website and local newspapers and were open to public. I'm glad to report we were successful in this regard, since most meetings were attended by numerous citizens, providing many valuable comments, which were incorporated into the amendments. I want to thank the participating residents for taking their time and bringing us excellent suggestions and comments that made this a much better ordinance. I also want to thank the planning and zoning commissioners, and especially the members of the review committee, for spending countless hours over two years and providing their expertise. And of course, I want to thank our staff, our zoning manager Chris Ballard, and our planners for meticulously preparing the documents. This completes a two-year process. I believe the proposed zoning ordinance represents a tremendous improvement, but I realize it is not perfect. Accordingly, additional amendments may be required time to time in the future. I'd like to make a note at the end that in response to a citizen's request at the final review meeting of the Planning Zoning Commission in September, the commission recommended keeping the proposed new zoning ordinance, the industrial performance standards. These are the regulations that deal with industrial vibration and industrial noise. Our staff has concerns with reinstating the unverified industrial performance standards in the existing form without a review and without comparison to other local jurisdictions. If we do that, it will continue the reliance on antiquated and unenforceable criteria that may put unreasonable burden on property owners. This section was initially removed from the drafts by the Planning Zoning Commission's reviewed committee during the public meetings phase of the project. The main reason for removal was that these standards dated back to early 1999 and were out of date. The county never budgeted for enforcement, and the applicants themselves were required to comply with these standards. It appears the standards were confusing and unreasonable even back in 1999, since according to my staff, the county has never received a single report from any applicant in accordance with these standards. We recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt the present draft zoning ordinance without the industrial performance standards. We also recommend the Board direct Development Services to research and to research the practice of other Arizona counties, and bring back in 90 days for public discussion and to the Planning Zoning Commission, a more current, reasonable, and enforceable set of standards, which will be presented to the Board of Supervisors for consideration after the Planning Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. If I'm translating your comments correctly on item 31, you want us to adopt the amendments to Mojave County zoning ordinance, but you would like us to table the industrial performance standards until some later date, when you have a chance to review them in more detail?
That's exactly correct, Mr. Chairman, and for a reasonable time only, and I have in mind 90 days, and what I have in mind to send it back to the Planning Zoning Commission so we can hear all the public comments and public input, and we can do a research with other Arizona counties, cities, local jurisdictions, and come up with a good, reasonable set of standards.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Hunt. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Hunt, before I go to the request to speak forms?
I do.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson?
Mr. Hunt, how many, you're talking about industrial part of it, how many complaints have we had since 2013?
We, we had one particular complaint, and the gentleman who spoke at the last, very last Planning Zoning Commission hearing was about the, he wants to keep the industrial standards, and I understand his reasons. What I understand from many meetings that our staff had with, with people out in the eastern portion of the valley, that the El Paso pipeline creates quite a bit of industrial noise when they do the pressure testing or release the pressures. And I understand those complaints, and we, you know, our staff went out and tried to deal with it. I want to emphasize, though, that this is the first complaint we had with it, but this set of standards is actually for the applicants. When a new applicant comes in and submits a new site plan or a rezon, then they're supposed to provide a report with these industrial standards, and we haven't received one because it's kind of confusing and unreasonable, and all industrial zoning was approved without that. Now, this complaint that we have addresses the El Paso pipeline, and the El Paso pipeline, we discussed it with our county attorney, and our deputy county attorney, Bob Taylor, actually provided an opinion on it, and in his opinion, Mr. Taylor points it out, the El Paso pipeline crosses several states, from the Midwest to the Los Angeles area, and any attempt to impose local control over the interstate industry would likely be barred by Interstate Commerce Clause. Federal legislation of interstate commerce preempts local legislation, and local legislation could not conflict or be inconsistent with the objectives of the federal legislation. So that's one of the reasons that we think that we should bring our regulations, if we have any regulations, don't have a bad regulations that's unenforceable, but make regulations that might be enforceable.
So your answer was one?
That's correct, sir. A long answer, I'm sorry for you.
All right. That's what I was getting at. I mean, we've had no complaints, except somebody showed up at the hearing. You went way out of your way to hold meetings. I have to disagree with your well-attended. We had one person on Lake Havasu who wasn't even a resident that showed up for the meeting. The percentage of participation by our residents was nil. People demanded to have, I don't know, would you have 20-some meetings, 19 meetings?
Yeah, we, over the two years, we had meetings, sometimes on a monthly basis, but I don't know exactly, but if I may add Supervisor Johnson, we had many citizens come in actually from different parts of the county. I didn't keep track, you know, who came from which part of the county, but actually we included many of the, of their suggestions, like the cottage industries, that's a good example. Our staff didn't think about it, that was put in because of citizens' requests.
What I'm getting at, we went way above and beyond normal scope of bringing, making opportunities for people to participate, and in reality, the rules and regulations that we've adopted have been working, have worked very good. There are always some tweaks that need to be done, but that's all I had. I mean, if we're going to look at this other one, that's fine, but, you know, for one person to complain, I agree with Mr. Taylor that we're not going to tell El Paso Natural Gas how much noise they can make in their pipeline, especially when it was the right-of-way that's been there forever when somebody barked, so that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you. Supervisor Watson, do you have any comments?
Well, yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, for your report this morning, but there's been more than one complaint, one general complaint by a number of people that want to address this, and I would very much be in favor of adopting our zoning ordinances and taking 90 days to look at this particular aspect of the industrial performance.
Thank you Supervisor Watson. Supervisor Bishop?
Yes, thank you. I agree with Supervisor Watson in bringing it back in 90 days, and if we can leave the numbering the same as it is, I think that would be helpful to address one of the complaints from Mr. Bishop. I think this is a quality of life that they're concerned about, not trying to tell the gas company what they can do, but trying to improve their quality of life out in that particular area. So if we can maybe blend this together with the existing noise ordinance, and if the numbering changes, so be it, but if we can leave it the same number, that would make Mr. Bishop pleased, I'm sure. It's been a long two years. I've gone to many of these meetings and saw how hard that the P&amp;Z commissioners worked to get this completed, and I'm very happy to see that you were able to get the cottage industries in there and also the mailboxes for new subdivisions. That was a new one that we brought in there, so I just wanted to commend you and everyone that worked on it. And I have one question, I guess, for the clerk of the board, and that is, how does this affect our codification process that's ongoing right now? Do we have to now send this document to this company and have them incorporate all the changes into that?
Yes, that's correct. We'll send it off and they'll put it into the document that they've already created or update it accordingly as it's approved today.
Okay, and that's not going to be a problem, just a procedural?
No. No, they'll, they'll do whatever we ask them to do, or however we send it, they will modify it to, to reflect your guys' decision.
All right. That's, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Do you have anything, Supervisor Angus?
I would like to say to Director Hunt, and I will give you a chance to speak, but only after I have, is that I want to commend you and your staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission for all the work. You're right, there's been many, many, many meetings. I've attended some of them, and a few that I've attended, I think was one in Kingman and one down in Bullhead, was actually, there was a lot of people in the room, there was bodies there. So it's, I think it depends on the time and the location of whether people showed up or not, so there was citizen participation. And I will say that I have reviewed the proposed ordinance. I did take a look at the industrial performance standards, and I did share the concern that you enunciated, because it seems like we took a lot of obligation on ourselves, and we didn't, from what I understand of our county structure, we don't have the means of actually enforcing it. So I'd be in favor of, until we hear from the rest of the people, anyway, preliminarily in favor of approving the Mojave County zoning ordinance amendments, but tabling the industrial performance standards for your 90 days. But having said all that, have you anything you'd like to say to the board before we go back to our other signed-up speakers?
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure I clarify that the Board orders Development Services to, to study this and go through public meetings and bring it back. I want to ask that we get adequate time to do that. So what I'm asking, the 90 days would be used to research and get all the public comments and bring it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and have the Planning and Zoning Commission here make the public hearings, basically, and then, then bring it back to the Board.
As to the industrial performance standards?
That's, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. I do appreciate your time. We also have signed to speak of Mr. Wayne Smith. Mr. Smith, are you present?
Chairman Moss, members of the Board, my name is Wayne Smith. I live at 2752 South Calais, Marco Way, Kingman, in obviously Arizona. I had quite a bit here to say, but I'm just going to cut it short. For the first time ever, I disagree with Nick, but we disagree to disagree. The noise level out there is like an F-15 taking off, and I have been in war zones, so I know. It is extreme, and I could read the letter or the email that was, came to this group, but I'm just going to let that one ride. What I don't understand why there's such pushback to make a decision that will enhance Mojave County's lives, residents, by keeping noise levels produced by industrial sites to a standard that has already been set forth in Section 27.5. I, I just urge you to vote yes on this and keep the industrial performance standards in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a, thank you, Mr. Smith. We have R.G. Bishop. Mr. Bishop, if you can approach, state your name, address, and share your comments with the Board.
My name is R.G. Bishop. I live at 251 North Friendship Pass in Kingman, Arizona, about a mile and a half from a particular industrial facility that we have been working with the county for approximately 10 years to get handled. We were directed by the county 10 years ago to start working with ADEQ, and we have been trying to work with them for the same period. Over the last two years, we have been working with the new proprietors of El Paso Gas Pipeline, and so this is a longstanding, longstanding issue. I know that every good presentation requires only three points. I'm going to try to make this down to only three points. One, moving this from where it is now because it does not apply to community is a false statement. If you read the very first opening paragraph in Section 27, it says that it applies exactly to community noise and industries imposing that noise on communities. Two, deleting it from where it is while they do a study is not the normal process that we, that we go by for rules that exist. You don't delete something because you think you might need to change it because you don't understand where the regulation came from. And by the way, this did not come in 1999. This regulation has been in place at least since 1991, because this very Board invoked it as a requirement for the El Paso Gas facility in question in 1991, and I have a copy of that with me if you'd like to see. Position number three, the county claiming that they have lost their ability to actually enforce this law, which was a federal mandate from a 1955 congressional law and the 1972 and 74 Noise Control Acts that have been put in place, those regulations have not changed in 40 years? There's no reason why, all of a sudden, there is a question about these antique statements or these antique requirements are not imposable. It is, as a matter of fact, a federal law that state and lower government jurisdictions are required to enforce the federal law. Do you have any questions? I'm ready.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bishop? I'll start with Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you for all your investigation and work you've done on this situation, Mr. Bishop. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Jean Bishop. I know that you've put a lot, a lot of years into this. I know you've gone down and testified in Phoenix in front of the, I believe, the Congressional Committee, and I know it's a big quality of life issue. I've, I've been out there, I actually have property in the area, but I haven't experienced the frustration that you folks have, and I, I'm torn with this. If, if Mr. Hunt needs more time to come up with the right verbiage and the right backup material so he can do a better job to do what you want to do, I don't have a problem with that. So my, my question to you is, why, why would you want it to be passed today when you have to amend it anyway if Mr. Hunt comes back with information that would benefit you? I'm just a little, little confused.
It's not just to benefit me. As you know, I'm the, I'm the co-chairman of, and representing all the residents in that community.
That's like 80 members, right, or more?
Yes, there's, there's quite a large group of people who are extremely frustrated with this issue. And we have filed paperwork according to ADEQ. We have gone to court over this. It's still not over. It took under some very arduous cross-examination to get ADEQ to finally admit that they, in fact, do have responsibility for imposing and enforcing some of these rules. They have been denying that fact for more than 10 years. It took also under some explicit cross-examination to get them to admit they, in fact, have had our, our complaints for more than 10 years. And I explained to them, as I'm explaining to the county right now, that for any person, which includes by legal definition any, any representative of any government at any level in the state and lower organizations, to willingly and knowingly allow this, these abuses to, to continue is punishable under federal law. So I don't know what else to say, except that we are trying to be good citizens and not damage our community, but we want to protect ourselves. The county has participated several times in testing. They have, in fact, verified that, that the, that this plant frequently operates way beyond the legal federal limits that were put in place in 1972, amended in 1974, and no action has been taken. So as pleasant as we try to deal with this issue, as consistent and professional and non-personal as we try to be, I think it, I take it as a personal affront for someone to tell me that they don't have the money to enforce a federal mandate. I was told that the equipment that they use is $1,900. I can't imagine what many a school percent that is of the county budget. I know they have equipment that works perfectly well. I personally bought so we could verify testing a device, very expensive for $26, that is very consistent with the county equipment. The county and I did test along with El Paso Gas and a third-party testing, testing agency, and verified that they are way in excess, way in excess, of safety standards established by Congress and the EPA. So I urge this county to consider leaving it where it is, as it is, which is the way it was passed in the Planning and Zoning meeting that we attended and represented, leaving it as it is, where it is, until such time as they decide there may be a problem with the regulation. This regulation, 27, has nine subject areas in it. Only one of them have to do with noise. The other nine subject areas are not in question, and there has been no evidence of any public comments from anyone or in direction from the state challenging the data in 27, the noise data from Paragraph 1 in 27. That's, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Angus, do you have anything? I have nothing. Thank you very much, sir. Going on, we have comments from Bill Defritis. I hope I said that correctly, probably didn't. If you can state your name and your, and probably correct my pronunciation of your name and your address for the record, sir, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, and good morning, Commissioner and the Board. My name is Bill Defritis. I reside at 11721 East Cox Road in Kingman. And I would just like to make one comment. I'm very pleased to tell you that my wife and I moved here almost exactly a year ago today. We absolutely love Kingman, we love the community, we love the place where we live, the views are spectacular. We've had a few visitors come down from Virginia, and during the summer, we sat out on the back patio, and they agreed that it's just beautiful here. But they all look at me and say, what is that noise, that constant humming noise? We live about a little less than two miles from the, the site that generates this noise, and I try to explain to them that this is now standard operating procedure for this particular facility, and it, it's a very irritating noise at best, but when they do something that I believe is called a pig blast, and I may have the incorrect terminology, it literally sounds like from our back porch, even inside in the summer with the windows closed, with the air conditioning on, that you're standing at the end of a tarmac and a 747 is taking off. Unfortunately, when I looked at the property and made the evaluation to buy, I was not even aware of it. It was early in the spring when that facility doesn't run at full speed, but during the summer, when there's a lot of electricity being used, and in the winter, again, for heat, it is, it is just a constant annoyance, and I guess that's about all I can say right now, but I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Defritis. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Defritis? Seeing none, thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
That's the last form I had to speak on item 31 of the agenda. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on item 31 before I close call to the public? Seeing none, I am closing.
[inaudible]
Yes, you have to step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you can have up to three minutes to speak.
My name is Dr. Olga Riggs. I live on 39, 3932 West Ship Drive, Golden Valley, Arizona. I'm opposed to the change of, to the proposition to change the standards for industrial noise and pollution or whatever it is. And there, besides noise, there are other health issues involved for the residents, for all the residents who live within close vicinity and even in not-so-close vicinity in, in Kingman. And I think this, those issues have to be examined more closely and more detailed, more studies need to be done before you make a decision not to limit the industries and not to restrict or not to impose standards on them, including noise and other forms of pollution. I think this is very important for the residents of Kingman and in general this county and the state and the whole world.
Thank you. Jenny, did you get her name? Do we, okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Is there anyone who would like to ask questions of the speaker? Seeing none? Is there anyone else who'd like to make any comments before I close the public meeting? The public meeting is closed. Can I have a motion, or is there any further discussion amongst the Board on item 31? I will make the comment that, in my opinion, the county, Planning and Zoning, and Mr. Hunt's Community Development Services have done an outstanding job in getting the Mojave County zoning ordinance done. I believe they've asked for more time to evaluate the industrial performance standards, not to say that there is not going to be standards, but to decide what the standards are going to be in keeping with our ability to both enforce and in the health of the public. So I do believe that it would behoove us to make a motion that we adopt the Mojave County ordinance, number 2015-07, which contains amendments to the Mojave County zoning ordinance pursuant to Arizona state statutes, except as to those items dealing with the industrial performance standards, which would be tabled for a period of at least 90 days for Mr. Hunt's, Director Hunt's staff, to bring it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and resubmit it to the Board. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass this 5-0. Congratulations, Mr. Hunt. Come back with us with those performance standards and, or to the Planning and Zoning Board in 90 days with those standards. Thank you. Okay.
Excuse me, Chairman Moss, may we take a five-minute break, please?
I probably have worked past your EEOC mandatory break limit, so yes, can we, we'll adjourn for a period of five minutes.
Can you make it 10?
Make it 10.
Anyone want to go to 15?
Anyone want to go to 15?
[laughter] Folks, if you can take your seat, we're going to resume the meeting. We have concluded our public hearings, and we are moving on to the regular agenda. Item 32, Discussion of Possible Action Ray, Adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution Number 2015-155, Zoning Use Permit on Assessor's Parcel Number 254-31-013J to allow a wireless communication facility which includes a 190-foot tower and three 1,000-gallon above-ground fuel tanks in a C-2H5A general commercial highway, five-acre minimum lot size zone in the Silverado vicinity west of US Highway 93 at mile marker 93 between Crazy Horse Road and Ferrier Road, Mojave County, Arizona. The commission recommended approval with conditions that address noise and safety issues by unanimous vote, continued by the board at their October 5, 2015, meeting. I do have people signed up to speak on this issue. The first person is Mr. Bill Defritis. Mr. Defritis?
Thank you, I already said my piece about the noise.
Excellent, thank you very much. Going on to Wayne Smith.
Commissioner Moss, members of the board, my name is Wayne Smith. I live at 2752 South Calais Marco Way. I'm for this zoning permit as recommended with conditions by Planning and Zoning. The only thing, I would have a huge suggestion that this company get electric, electricity ran to this tower as soon as possible, or even to start that way, because it would be even better. This would help one of the main issues of noise by the generator by not running, and also hopefully they could eliminate 3,000 gallons of diesel, that maybe that could be reduced to 500 gallons for emergency use of the generator when electricity is out. It would also take away a lot of the fire risk at that site. I urge you to vote yes on this with the conditions set forth by Planning and Zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next person is R.G. Bishop. Mr. Bishop?
Good morning, my name is R.G. Bishop. I live at 251 North Friendship Pass, Kingman, Arizona. We have participated in the Planning and Zoning Review Boards for a lot of items, and this particular item is of interest to us because there are inherent in remote unmanned sites that have fuel and fire hazards onboard. Inherently, there is always the problem of when things go wrong, who are you going to call? Our main concern is that there be, I'm sure there will be a containment area for the fuel should there be a spill. Not every hunter is as cautious as I'm sure most of us are. I'm also sure there will be an alarm system that will notify someone, hopefully locally, that a problem has occurred, not just fire or smoke, heat, heat exchanger problems with the generator or fuel spill, but any kind of problem. The question we raised was, who is going to be responsible for responding, and this is one of like five sites. I agree with Mr. Smith that getting electricity up there might reduce the requirement for fuel on-site, so that the generators will only be used for emergencies instead of running all the time. I'm not sure why solar is not an option, but whatever the final solution is, there are inherent problems with remote sites that we're all familiar with, and I agree with the board, the Planning and Zoning Board's decision that, that this company must identify who will be responding to these emergencies so that they can accept responsibility for them, so that we know who to call when things are awry. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bishop. That's the last person I have to speak on this issue. It's a pleasure of the board, Mr. Hunt. This is under your name. Do you wish to make any comments about this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I understand the concerns of the citizens. If there is a fire, then they want to know who responds, and I think that's why the board tabled it. And our emergency management coordinator, Mr. Byron Stewart, wrote a letter to the board explaining the response, and the, basically, the Pinion Pine Fire District would be the first responder, and they would be charging for the response cost if they can collect, if they could not, they still would respond. There are other agencies that may respond in the, it says in the letter, the State Forestry or BLM, but they typically respond to wildfires. In addition to that, the applicant submitted additional data showing that they're going to have containment for the diesel tanks, and I think they agreed to put up walls to, to limit the noise from, from the facility. So that's what the additional information that the board requested that we bring back when they tabled it at the last time, and that's in your packet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. Does anyone of the board, any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Hunt or any further discussion?
I believe we have a member of the audience.
Yes, sir. Have you filled out a request to speak form?
I'm the applicant, if I could.
Come on up. Normally, next time, make sure you fill out the request to speak form, even if you are the applicant.
Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, members of the board, Chairman Moss. Declan Murphy is my name. I'm representing American Tower. My address is 1525 North Hayden Road in Scottsdale, Arizona. Just to give you a quick background on what we're trying to accomplish here, we have a number of facilities that we're proposing along SR93 to provide service for, for that route, in addition to provide service in the vicinity of SR93. We had three other applications that were approved. This is the fourth application. So what we have essentially here is a worst-case scenario design. We have designed the site with the, actually propane tanks. It's not diesel, it's actually, the generator would be fueled by propane, but with, with the number of propane tanks and the number of sorrel panels, that would be only if this site was relying completely on alternative power. So this is a worst-case scenario. We believe that, given the location of this site, out of, out of all the sites, that there actually is permanent power close by, and that's always the best option for any carrier because it's certainly more cost-effective to, to bring permanent power in as opposed to relying on the alternative power source. So we would have a backup capacity here that even with permanent power, we would need at least a propane tank and a generator, simply because nowadays cell sites are useless if you don't have fiber there to be able to handle the data. So this whole network is basically relying on a daisy chain of microwave dish fiber. So with that, you'd have to have a backup capacity for that telco, because if power went down at this site, it would bring down the entire network. So with that said, you know, I've spoken with Chief Jackson at Pinion Pines Fire District, who was the, that's the district that's closest to this site. He offered some common sense advice with regards to weed control, that we are actually going to, we've revised our drawings to, to address that, and but in addition to obviously complying with all Mojave County Fire Code, we're proposing to weed barrier and put two or three inches of gravel throughout the compound. In addition to that, do a buffer of about 20 foot on the outside where the propane tanks would be located. And with regards to the generator, what we're proposing there is placing the generator underneath the sonar panel that would deflect the sound from residences to the, to SR93. But having said that, that generator would only be in a backup capacity because we would rely on solar for backup and battery power, so therefore the generator would be, the use would be very, very limited. So we understand the neighbors' concerns, we hope this addresses those concerns, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, sir. Does any member of the board have a question? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
We have a comment, though, but you don't, I don't think you need to be here for that.
I just, I would just like to thank you very much, sir, for making those additional corrections and listening to the, to the local folks out there and their concerns, and by addressing those, I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion of the board? If so, I would entertain a motion to approve item 32 of the agenda with the conditions that address noise and safety issues, and as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Going on to item 33 of the agenda, Discussion of Possible Action Ray, Direct Staff to Develop a Request for Proposals for Medical Examiner Services for Advertisement and Distribution in Coordinance with Mojave County Procurement Code and Arizona Revised Statutes. Furthermore, Bringing Back for Board Consideration a Contract Recommendation for Qualified License Medical Examiner to Service as Mojave County Medical Examiner Performing Forensic Pathology Services for Mojave County. This is under Annie's name. Annie, are you here?
Thank you, Chairman Moss and Supervisors.
Thank you, Chairman Moss and Supervisors. I just wanted to bring this before the Board. The current contract with Dr. Royal is due to expire June 30th of 2016, which leaves us about seven months. But I wanted to get your direction moving forward since it is a lengthy process and we are always trying to improve how we go about doing solicitations and there are some things that we need to work on on this one and possibly get additional interest with advertising and publications that we're also researching. So before we wanted to get into the meat of this, we wanted your direction if you want us to proceed in developing the RFP and going out to bid.
I'll start with Supervisor Johnson to my left.
Is there a renewal clause or are we done with renewals?
This is the end of it. The contract originally was for a five-year period. The first, the first initial term was for a two-year period and then we accepted a two-year renewal and right now we're in the last of that, the one year, which would meet the five-year obligation.
So the answer is no. Okay. Has the person we have now shown any interest in wanting to, or have they asked to extend the contract or?
I do not believe they've asked to extend it. They are aware during the last negotiation that we had that this was the final renewal period. So she is aware that we will be looking at going out to bid.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Watson.
I'm that.
Supervisor Bishop.
Yeah.
Supervisor Angus. Thank you for your time, Annie. Can I have a motion on item 33 of the agenda? Seeing none, I move that we direct staff to develop a request for proposals for medical examiner services for advertisement and distribution in accordance with Mojave County Procurement Code and Arizona Revised Statutes. Furthermore, bring back for Board consideration a contract recommendation for a qualified licensed medical examiner to serve as a Mojave County Medical Examiner performing forensic pathology services for Mojave County, Arizona. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Going on to item 34, Discussion of Possible Action, Ray. Recognition of Local Sponsors for Their Contributions to Mojave County Hosted County Supervisor Association 2015 Legislative Conference and authorize the Chairman to sign individual thank you ladders on behalf of the entire Board. May I have a motion to approve?
Pro move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Going on to 35, Discussion of Possible Action, Ray. Accept a donation totaling $510 that was generated at the CSA Summit through a silent auction. Donations were a beautiful patriotic quilt donated by the Red, White, and Blue Quilters of Meadview, $310, and a one-night stay at the Grand Canyon Ranch Quaint Couples Cabin, including breakfast and dinner for two, donated by Robert Bravo, a $200 value. May I have a motion on item 35?
Motion to approve.
Is there a?
Second motion.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favors? Aye.
Aye.
Item 36, Discussion of Possible Action, Ray. Application submitted for the Risk Manager position. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've received quite a few lists and I don't know if we're ready to make recommendations or what the Board wants to do, but I don't think we should let these people hang too long. We're going to lose any applicants if we might have.
My understanding is that the county approached an ACO employee for purposes of seeing whether they would have the time to review. I think the upwards of 36 by memory, I'm not sure if that's correct, but a lot.
Right.
Of applicants. And that particular employee thought she would be busy over the next few months because of the projects which are pending. So that's where we have the applications, addition applications since her last go-around. We need to have a vetting process put in place and that's where we're at now. So we either wait for ACO to free up their time or we appoint someone to vet the applications and make recommendations with, of course, the proviso that any supervisor can pull anyone they want and add to the interview list.
Mr. Chairman, I would think with the short time we have that it would, you know, what the Board members want, just to review them individually ourselves and come, you know, because I think we need to act pretty quickly because we're getting close to Christmas and...
All right. What about this suggestion that we have the applications. If staff will provide us the applications at the next meeting, each Board member will identify those that they would be interested in interviewing and then once we identify that list, we can hand it over to Administration to set up the interviews.
Do we, do we have to wait till next meeting for that to happen?
We can do it by email. I mean, but I think for Board action to set up the interviews.
But I can, I can forward the applications to you so you already have them.
All right. So the next seven days, well, seven days, Sherman Jenny provides us the applications. Each Board member can select those that they would be interested in interviewing for purposes of us building an interview list. And then at that time, staff will take the lead in scheduling those interviews.
Number?
Do you want to limit the number of Board members? Because if I get crazy and decide that I want to interview all 36, some people might object, including me.
It does cost money.
Yeah.
Bring them in.
I have a question. Could we ask the County Manager to review the 36 applications and narrow it down to maybe the top five or 10 and so that we wouldn't have to?
That's another method.
Look at all 36 applications?
What do you say to that?
Would be willing to do that?
Well, I would think, I mean, if, if we all send our recommendations to Mr. Anderson and if we see that the Chairman has gone crazy and put too many people down, then we could have a, have a, have a quick meeting to say, what are you doing? But I don't, I don't think the Board members would probably say, you know, I would hope that we'd all be similar people, you know, so we're just down to just a handful of people because we have qualifications there and background. Because if you, I've looked at them and so I think it's a pretty easy, easy shot.
What do you say?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
All right. Do we want to limit the number of people that the, an individual Board member can nominate? No?
No.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion that we direct Jenny, our clerk, to provide us the applications? And with seven days within that, within seven days of delivery of those applications, each Board member may nominate people to interview, which will be communicated by Jenny and then staff will go about setting up the interviews.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
For discussion?
Yes.
Well, the only thing is if we get a big, big list, say of five or six people and because of the travel, would it, maybe if the Board had a executive session to go over those, you know, say, okay, what are your reasons for this? Maybe if, if the list gets too big, I mean, even six or seven people does cost us money.
I will tell you what I was planning to do. I'm Supervisor Johnson and I probably should have said this, but because it was worth about three or four steps past the process. If the list gets larger than six, I was going to call a special meeting where the Board can get together, but via telephone or otherwise, and try to narrow it down to a maximum of six, something that's not unwieldy.
Thank you. That's all I was trying to plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Watson.
And we do need to replace the one we have now, so.
Yes. All right. We have a motion. We've had a second. We've had some discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Going on to item 37, Discussion of Possible Action, Ray. CSA Membership and Status. No one has signed up to speak on this item. I'll say this, I thought the Legislative Summit was successful from a preliminary Mount Mojave County perspective and there was things that were said and done, not just to Mojave Counties but to others, which caused me concern at that Legislative Summit. And, and to, I think there is some who would like to withdraw from CSA. There are some who would like to remain in CSA. I'm kind of sitting on the fence and I want to see how, what CSA does for us on our specific issues over this next year. But I wanted to have, put this out there so we can, there is a cloud in the room and I wanted to dispel that cloud. So maybe we can all make our comments about CSA, see where we stand here and, and plan for going forward. So I'll start with you Supervisor Angus because you're agreeing with me.
I usually go like this when people speak, so I don't know if that's necessarily right.
I took that as an affirmative nod of assent.
Like a bobble dog. Thank you and thank you for putting this on the agenda. You know, this has been brewing, as far as I'm concerned, for several years. I first want to say that the staff of CSA, well, just for some background, CSA for all intents and purposes is basically our lobbying organization for all of the county supervisors in the entire state. So this particular organization has a membership of all 15 counties, which is pretty unusual, but we have, you know, relatively few counties as compared to other states like Virginia or whatever. I believe just from going that it's kind of a model that doesn't really work because all the different counties have very different issues that they want. So we get together once a year and we can put them out and then as a group, we vote on them. And that's what we did a couple of weeks ago. And like any organization, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And like any political organization, the people who show up are the ones who drive the agenda. And in this particular organization, at least when I've been involved and I've, you know, admittedly only since I've been in, in office and I know there's some here that have been longer, I do not, as a pure business decision, I do not think it is a, is a good use of our money. You know, last year, two years ago, we talked about using some of that money to get a lobbyist that would just concentrate on our issues, which to me makes sense. There are other organizations that do this. We're a member of an organization called ACO, which Supervisor Johnson was actually the president of last year. And they do very similar things except they include all of the county, not just supervisors. I find the County Supervisor Association, although the staff is, has been very nice and very attentive and very capable, you know, again, I just think is not a good use of money. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm sort of out. I'm not going to be attending them because just, not just our membership money, but the money that we spend in travel expenses to go there. I just don't think it is a wise use of money in these times when we're looking at every penny that we get. I don't know if we want to go into sort of, you know, the thing that was sort of the straw that broke the camel's back is that we ask them for some support on an issue that was not just important to us, but important, we believe, to every county. And we thought it was such a no-brainer, we didn't even show up. And it became very political and the political aspect, and this is a question I can never get answered, is why our lobbyist group takes lobbyists' money. You know, and I think that that's just a problem in government general that we talk about all the time, but this particular organization takes money to supplement meetings and stuff from sometimes businesses and organizations that we're at odds with. And so we pay, you know, in the last three, four, two, three years, you know, I fought the state government, we fought the, the federal government, and now I find myself fighting in an organization that we actually pay to be a part of. And I just don't think that makes very wise sense. So that is where I stand. If it were up to a vote for me today, I would say leave it. If we hadn't had the summit two weeks ago, I think it would have been easier, but we did pay, we voted and so we thought that since we voted and we held it, it would be, it wouldn't be the right thing to do to not pay our dues. So we did pay our dues this year, which are substantial. It's about $80,000. And so we are a member and we did put items out there for them to work on. But again, mentally, I am out. I think it's the sort of thing, on our issues, we have a good enough relationship with our legislative delegation down there that we can go ourselves and pick up phones ourselves. After several years, I know most of the friendly representatives down in Phoenix, as do everybody here on this dais, and that's how I would choose to go forward. But that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you Supervisor Angus. Supervisor Bishop?
I think our membership dues are excessive, but they are our lobbyists and do we want an association that has membership statewide, not lobbying for us and perhaps even lobbying against us? And yeah, that's, that's a concern. ACO is, is a good organization that we belong to as well and they do the same thing. They are lobbyists for not only county supervisors, but all the elected officials. So there's only so much lobbying that, that they can do, but they do lobby for us as well and as well. And I know we hired a Mojave County person to go down and be a lobbyist for us for a year period and, and I believe that was a, a bad decision because a lobbyist takes many, many years to, to learn who all the players are down there and to be able to be effective. So I think we need our representation down there. We have our, our three state legislators that do a good job for us, but I think it's something that we need to really consider and put a lot of thought into before we pull out completely and, and find a large lobbying group like CSA lobbying against us. So that's just my thoughts and we'll see where it goes.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Moss. Having had a chance to think this over for several, several months, I think it behooves us to really give some, some deep thought on CSA. They represent us at the Legislature, they represent us at the federal level. Many times, it's not exactly what we would like to have represented. Many times, some of the smaller counties have a larger voice sometimes than we do. But I, I believe it behooves us to remain a, a member of CSA. If we were to withdraw our membership, I feel that we would be standing out somewhat outside of the box. And before you make this decision on pulling out of CSA, go to a number of ACO meetings and from there, walk away with the decision. Be fair. Go to ACO, begin involved in ACO, compare those two and compare the ability to entertain the Legislature, compare their effectiveness before you jump off and make a decision to withdraw from CSA. That's really my only, my request is to make sure that the direction that you're heading is one that will be good for Mojave County. CSA has served us well in the past. I for one would prefer to stay in CSA. And I'd also recommend that you talk to our legislators, legislator Regina Cobb, Sonny Borelli, and, and our current Senator, Senator Ward, and get their impressions of CSA and their input and their analysis of that before we make a decision to pull out of CSA. I'm afraid if we were to pull out, we would be standing in the rain by ourselves and I have no intention of doing that without some type of cover or umbrella. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Watson. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's gotten to be a luxury we can no longer afford. I mean, if we were rolling in the dough, it would be one thing. I don't see the benefit that we're getting. I think this year was a, was a prime example with Supervisor Angus was cautious in her wording, but for those that don't understand, they, CSA got backing from Freeport MacMoran, who we're involved in the lawsuit with for their, for their organization. And, and it would have been one thing if they didn't file the amicus brief like ACO did because ACO had never done one, so it was kind of a whole new thing for them to get involved. But CSA had just filed one for Pima or Penal County and refused Mojave County, so they really kicked us to the curb. We weren't asking for them to take a side, we're just asking for them to say, you know, we, we had a standing to be heard to be either win or lose. I think they made that very clear. I think this year, they came back and asked for an increase in dues when every county's hurting, which doesn't, you know, and the membership votes on that. I'm not saying that, you know, they did it on their own. And I'm the same as the rest of you. They have a wonderful staff. I just believe that it's, there's personalities getting involved because even we at, we at the Board here, we all, when it comes to a vote, I think we all vote for what's best for the county. We don't hold it against, you know, one person that we're having a disagreement with and vote against them. And I, and I think that's what CSA has become, an organization that is getting a little bit petty and I would vote to not fund them myself.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. I'll say that I, I'm going to, the reason I sit on the fence while I'm ambivalent is because part of me agrees with Supervisor Watson. Another part of me, based upon my personal observations, agrees with Supervisor Johnson and Angus. From my observations, I have serious reservations regarding their vote not to support Mojave County while ACO did it within, what, two, had a brief filed within three days of request? It was, it was, the contrast between the two responses was immense and I just get the impression constantly from CSA that some counties get more play than others. And I believe that does come down to personalities. My suggestion is that we sit on the CSA issue that we just direct staff to bring this back in the second week of May, second meeting- in the second week of May, second meeting of May, and then we'll decide. Because they'll have plenty of time to have, from my perspective, evaluate. Essentially, they're on notice, they know we're not happy. So, give them a chance. I could put them on probation, if you will, and bring them back in the second meeting of May and decide what we're gonna do then. That would be my suggestion. So, can I have a motion to table item thirty-seven until the second meeting of May of next year?
I have Mr. Nicholson.
We have Mr. Nicholson, our assessor, who I will allow to say a few words.
Thank you very much. This is dear to me. The, for those of us that have been around a long time, the supervisors used to be all ACO, Arizona Association of Counties. Then a group of supervisors decided they didn't like what ACO was doing, they wanted to do it their own way, and they broke away, and they become, and it became CSA. And usually, they're at odds. It used to be that supervisors would have meetings, just like assessors have meetings, attorneys have meetings statewide, all during the ACO. ACO does a great job. I, I personally think that you're on the right track here in your discussion. I will tell you that we never had it so good as when we devoted our money to our full-time lobbyist that we hired down in Phoenix. I worked with that person day and night, accomplished more in passing meaningful legislation than I have ever since. And I think that's something you ought to really consider.
What, what year was that, the full-time lobbyist?
Well, I started in that when I was a chief deputy, so that had to have been eighteen years ago.
Okay. The older, not the last one, the one that was before?
Yeah, right. In fact, he's still a representative, I think, like Havasu City. And, and it was, he worked for another, at that time, for another lobbying group. But I, I will just tell you that having somebody right in your corner, especially if electeds get involved, in other words, if you're willing to go down there, like me as an assessor, treating assessment issues, and I've, I've passed it through the board and say, hey, you guys, I need your support, we tell our lobbyists to devote time to this and work with me. And this is to be true for the, for the attorneys, for the recorder, for the treasurer, for you. The legislature listens when another elected person stands up and speaks, because they figure, well, you're in the trenches, you have X number of people who are your constituents, and they're listening to you, so therefore, we should listen to you and listen to what you say. Because not, you're not just a lobbyist, but you're professional in what you do. And I wish we would go back to hiring a person like this and each of us work with them down there. Thank you.
Thank you Assessor Nicholson.
I think, Mr. Chairman, also, Mr. Nicholson brings up a point that some people might have been aware of. I think there's only, I could be wrong, I think there's only two states that have two organizations. The rest of them just have one state association of counties.
If it was up to me, if we were, hypothetically, if we did leave CSA, we would devote those resources to hire our lobbyists. I don't, like Supervisor Watson stated, I don't want to be standing alone in the rain. And so, it's, but that's something we can bring back the second meeting of May 2016, in which to make a decision based upon the course of conduct for this coming legislative session.
Chairman Moss, I have, I have one more statement. A couple of years ago, there was a piece of legislation that specifically hurt Mojave County. And it was right when this, the new board came on, and it, it, what happened was that CSA didn't let us know about it, and the only, the only person and organization that actually stood up for Mojave County, even when Mojave County didn't stand up for itself, was ACO. And, and I'm never gonna forget that, because when I first came on board, CSA actually tried to take the credit for that, but we kind of caught them in the middle of it. And, and that's sort of, that was the beginning of it for me. You know, I, I watched it very carefully, what was going on, and see, you know, just how, how things get done. And again, I just think the whole model of being a lobbyist for every county just is, is not a very smart model. It just, it just can't work. You have whole different, different issues, and the big issues that everyone fights for, like pilt and, and all that stuff, they're gonna fight anyway. And I, I don't see them lobbying against us. And speaking of lobbyists, the, the one good thing they had for them, they had one of the best lobbyists in the state, and now he went to work for Coconino County, who now runs the board. So, again, this could just be a short-term thing, things change, and if we left, it could be something that every year, the board can come back and decide if they would still want us back, which I'm sure they would. But it would, but I would still like to give them enough time, because they will have to figure out how to make up the money if we would leave, and I think we would owe them the, the courtesy of doing that.
My understanding is that Coconino, in addition to being members of CSA and ACO, also have a private lobbyist, which the gentleman that you mentioned, they've done that for a number of years, which might explain a certain disproportionate influence. Regardless, can I have a motion that we table item thirty-seven and direct staff to bring it back to us in the second week, second meeting, rather, of May 2016?
Shall I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Going on to item thirty-eight, discussion of possible action, Ray. County leave accrual, carryover, and severance payout policy for existing employees and new hires. We have one person signed up to speak to this, Mr. Bill Whiting. Mr. Whiting? If you could state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes for the board.
Good morning Chairman Moss and Supervisors. My name is Bill Whiting, at twenty-five thirty Thompson Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. I agree with Mr. Watson's proposal. Please let me bring forth a lesson of learning. A young couple, husband and wife, decided to buy a farm and become farmers. As they were driving down this old dirt country road, they came upon a farm for sale. With the agreement, the couple couldn't believe how beautiful this farm and the corn and soybean fields looked. The corn stalks were reaching for the sky, and the soy, and the soybeans were overflowing the stems they are growing on. As they drove up on to the dirt driveway to the farmhouse, they both fell in love with the looks of the well-built farmhouse and the barns that surrounded it. They stopped and got out of the, got out and went up onto the large porch and knocked onto the screen door. The older couple came out onto the porch and asked, can we help you? The young man replied and said, yes. My wife and I would love to buy your farm and become farmers like you and your wonderful wife. The older couple asked them to have a seat on the porch and have a glass of cool lemonade with them, so they did. The older gentleman farmer asked the young man to take a walk with him, while the young wife and the older lady sat on the porch talking about old country cooking. As two, as the two men looked over the corn and soybean fields while walking towards the barns, the young man couldn't but wonder why they were, are going to this corral barn and not into the main, bigger barn. As they walked into the corral barn, the young man was amazed and couldn't believe how clean and nice this corral barn was. And two corrals, and, and in two corrals stood two great-looking, working mules. The young man noticed very clear, very clean corral stalls where the working mule stayed, with fresh water for bedding, plus well amount of fresh water, and a graciously well amount of feed for them in their stalls. The old farmer stopped them in front of the two stalls and said to the young man, this is two, there, there is two things that made my wife and I a very good farmer throughout our lives here on the farm. Number one, God. Number two, these two great working mules. The older farmer told the young man, it took a lot of time and investment in training and caring for these hard-working mules that helped give my wife and I these rows of corn and soybeans and, that grew this wonderful farm that God has blessed us with today. So, remember, if you take away from these two, can I have just a few seconds?
You can have ten seconds, sir. Go ahead.
For these two hard-working mules, if you take away from these two hard-working mules, what you have been giving them to do a great job you want to do, you'll, will greatly lose your investment that you put out in training for them over these years. And remember why you invested into these mules in the first place, to help you train for your next new mules, and by to do a great job for you going into the future. Don't lose the farm. Keep the current PTO policy for the current employees intact to help you succeed for the future in training the new employees, which will lower your investment and training cost. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is under Supervisor Watson's name, and that's the last person I had signed to speak on the agenda today. So, I'll let Supervisor Watson start.
Thank you Chairman Moss. I bring this item back as a proposal after consulting with many of the elected and many of the directors of each division. It's a fairly drastic cut from our, from our current system. It's at least a twenty-five percent cut and reduction, and I feel that it's, it's, while it is a great reduction, it is still enough for, to be an incentive for our new people to come aboard. Afraid if we cut any further, that we would in, further in, cut our ability to, to have those new people come aboard, as far as an enhancement and incentive. So, that's why I'm bringing it to you today for consideration. You may want to make a modification to it, may want to further discuss it, but I wanted to bring it forth.
Thank you Sup, I'm sorry.
As at least a twenty-five percent reduction from our current, and this would be for only our new employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Watson. I do appreciate the proposal, which I have in front of me. There was a piece of paper on the desk, I think we all have it in front of us, which also has the current proposal, and then there's below it, a new proposed proposal, and I believe that came from Supervisor Angus. Am I correct?
Well, I just checked, it was actually, it was actually staff's original proposal.
Okay, so it's from Mr. Cunningham's office, then?
And, well, I believe it's from the, from county administrator, too.
Okay.
Worked together. This was the, this was the formal proposal from the administration and HR, the one that I have in front.
So, looking, and this is, so we're all on the same page. The current PTO policy is, I'm gonna speak in a matter of days here, is twenty, for years, through, at the end of the first year, there's twenty-six days. Through the end of the fourth year, there's twenty-nine point two five days. To the end of the ninth year, there's thirty-two point five days. To the end of the fourteenth year, there's thirty-five point seven five days. And through, starting years fifteen and over, it's thirty-nine days a year. Supervisor Johnson's proposal is, looking at the thing, is...
No, Supervisor Watson.
Supervisor Watson's proposal, excuse me, I misspoke, is, and I hope I'm not getting this incorrect, is four weeks or twenty days, if I'm doing the math correctly. And I gotta speak in hours, because I can't do the math, the math in my head this way, is a hundred and eighty-five hours through year nine. Through year fourteen, two hundred and ten hours. And through year fifteen, two hundred and forty hours, which is, assuming my math is, is holding up, six weeks. The current staff proposal, or this old staff proposal...
Oh, wait.
Which is the piece of paper in front of us.
Right. But on the proposal I'm proposing, there's not one past fifteen.
There's fifteen years plus, nine point two-three per pay period, two hundred and forty hours a year. That's, starting at year fifteen, that's where you max out at. Then we have the old, I'll call it, I won't call it the Cunningham proposal, because I think he got a lot of people having input on that. But the prior proposal was through year three, fifteen days. Through year nine, twenty days. Through year fourteen, twenty-five days. Through year, starting at year fifteen, it is thirty days. So, looking at this, it looks like the proposal that Supervisor Angus provided agrees with your suggestion Supervisor Watson, starting at year fifteen, the numbers line up at year fifteen and forward.
Oh, um...
That's hours accrued per pay period, nine point two-three, thirty days per year, which would be thirty times forty, would be, I think, two hundred and forty. Am I wrong about that? So, it comes out to being, it looks like it comes out to being the same at the end. The differences are at the beginning and the midway point. It also looks like for new hires Supervisor Watson's proposing a severance payout not to exceed three hundred hours. In other words, if they have six hundred hours on the books and they don't take that three hundred hour difference in time, they're only, they're gonna lose it, and they're gonna get three hundred hours max as their payout.
Correct.
So, I would like to at least figure out, because we have to discuss this, and we have to hopefully come to a resolution, where our points of agreement and our points of disagreement are when it comes to new hires. And I believe, and I'll just go, go around, let's start with a three hundred hour cap. Are you okay with that Supervisor Angus?
It's three hundred hour carryover.
And severance payout not to exceed...
And pay, right. So, it's, that's the carryover.
Right. Carryover and severance payout will not exceed three hundred hours. Are you okay with that?
I am okay with that. That was what was in the proposal I made two meetings ago.
Okay. What do you think Supervisor Bishop about that portion of it?
Yes.
What do you think Supervisor Watson about, you, you came up with it, I'll assume you're a given. Supervisor Johnson?
I, I think we're piecemealing it. I think we, we have an attorney we paid money to, to give us an opinion back, and I understand that we can do any, whatever we want with new hires. But I think this needs to be wrapped into, we just had the proposal by the sheriff and a lot of other departments. Supervisor Bishop brought up the fact that, of our pay scale, I, I think that merit increases, the, the PTO, all of that needs to be in, in one package, or I don't think it was gonna make much sense. I, I believe that we should have, you know, nobody agrees with me, but I think it should be sick of vacation time, because if you're given six weeks of paid vacation, I cannot afford to do that, and no other office can either, because that's a part-time employee. But that's just the way it is.
I, I don't necessarily disagree with you Supervisor Johnson. Now, so, as I understand it, for, because I'm gonna say I like the, for new hires, I like the three hundred hour cap, also for carryover and severance payout. And there's the issue, though, we have an attorney out there who's doing a letter as to what our parameters of authority might be, vis-à-vis everybody. But I'm trying to see if we, part of this discussion, we can find common ground, at least on the new hires, and, and go forward. So, we have, as I see it, two points of agreement, which is the payout, the carryover and severance payout, which I'll just call the payout. And we also have the days and hours beginning at year fifteen. Those are the two points of agreement that I see between the various proposals, which change from the prior proposals, or from the current proposal. The differences that I see in what's in front of us for new hires is the accrual rate for year one, excuse me, years one through three, years four through nine, and years ten through fourteen. That's the differences I see right now between those two things sitting in front of us. So, let's, let's have a conversation. I mean, we can, we're in an open meeting, we can talk about this, and let's figure out what we can do. Are you okay Supervisor Angus, with Supervisor Watson's proposal of a hundred and sixty hours, which would be, I, I need a calculator.
It's four weeks.
It's four weeks.
No.
Okay.
That's why I did this, you know, and we've been, like we said, we've been talking about it, and when I came back on October fifth, which was the day we were gonna vote on it, this was my compromise, because I'm with Supervisor Johnson, that I think we give way too much. So, because I listened to what people said, because I heard about needing it for recruitment, and I thought that now is the time, if we're gonna do it, to sort of stop the bleeding, so it's gonna take many, many years to sort of whittle all this away, I thought it was a good start, and that is my line in the sand. I, I do not think any more than three weeks a year is, is, I, I think that is way, way generous, and as way, is right in line with what the other counties did, which is what I asked from the beginning, just wanted to be in line with the other counties, because we were talking earlier about needing to be in the middle and, and be competitive with the other counties, and I think this one, that one did it. Again, nothing crazy, it came right from staff, didn't come from, you know, my, my computer, and that's the one that I would vote for, I would not vote for for year, four weeks.
So, we're talking about years one through three, or data higher through year, end of year three. Supervisor Watson's plan is at four weeks. Supervisor, I'm gonna call it Angus' plan, I'm sorry. I'm sorry Supervisor Angus, I just need a label, is three weeks. What do you say to that Supervisor Watson?
Why don't we go down the line as we...
Okay. All right, we've had, we've heard Supervisor Angus... All right, we've had, we've heard Supervisor Angus, Supervisor Bishop.
I would be willing to, excuse me, I'd be willing to bring it down to an even six for the hours accrued on Supervisor Watson's proposal. Just round it off to six.
So, that would reduce it point one-five times forty, which would be, I don't, again, I need a calculator to do this.
I can read that math.
Okay, so, all right. I actually like the years one through three as being three weeks, but that's something we can talk about. Supervisor Watson?
I can live with three weeks, as long as we can continue to recognize the service of those folks from year four through nine and years ten through fourteen.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson?
So, so that is a yes, but?
Yes, but. So, as I understand where Supervisor Watson is at, he'd be willing to change the first three years of accrual to three weeks, which would be a hundred and twenty hours, not the hundred and sixty hours for new hires, but years four through nine and years ten through fourteen would stay the same under your proposal?
Correct.
What do you say to that, Supervisor Angus?
I say, why do it if we're going to do it like that? Why even do it?
It's still...
It's no sense. We either do it or we don't do it.
Well, we...
You know, and this was, this was my compromise, and I'm, I'm firm on it. I'm not going to, I'm not going to play that game, not going to go back and forth. This is what I would vote for. This is what came from staff's recommendation, and I'm not going to go and negotiate at times.
Well, I'm looking at this, and from my perspective, if they go to three weeks, Supervisor Watson goes to three weeks, and we're both ending at the same point, both plans end at the same point. So, is there any room to move on the two, the year four through nine category and the end, year ten through fourteen category?
No.
Okay, all right. I believe we're not going to actually make forward progress on new hires based on that. Does anyone want to make a motion, or do we just want to let this drop for now and wait until we get the written opinion from our lawyer as to what our parameters are?
I'd be willing to make a motion to adopt the accrual, drop the, the first portion of the beginning to the end of three years to three weeks, leave items three, two, three, and four alone, and change the, without change to three hundred hours. That's my proposal.
Okay. So, basically, as I understand it, what I'm calling the Angus Plan, you're changing, you're adopting years one through three, but you're keeping everything in place when it comes to year three, or, excuse me, year four through fifteen?
Right, that would be seven point two, eight point oh-eight, and nine point two-three.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion from anybody? I would, I would like to see a compromise here, but I think it has to be a compromise that a supermajority of the board would be willing to go for. So, with that said, is there, all in favor? Let's go by roll call of Supervisor Watson's motion.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
And Chairman Moss?
No. With that said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gave it a shot.